Okay, well, my clock just turned six thirty, so I see in the, in the room, we have a quorum. So I will call a meeting, the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of our consent agenda. Item one there is vouchers totaling two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Next, we have minutes from the February twenty, twenty twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve our consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Wilkins seconds. Was there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now into our first opportunity for public comment. And I believe that we have some members of, kind of of the public, but maybe more importantly of our fire department here. Uh, somebody, would you guys care to address the council?
That'd be great.
No, we don't. Actually, we'd like all of you to come up, please. You can just push it out if you need more room.
Thanks, Ken. For the council.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
My name is Matt Heim, firefighter in the fire department, and brought with me Katie Spencer. Should we get it right? She's a firefighter and Billy Hendricks also a firefighter. Um, we just attended a training school called SCAP, it's the State Capitol Area Firefighter Association Training. Um, you guys thankfully supported us in doing that. So, um, we are here to basically express our appreciation to the council. It means a lot to us to be able to go up there. We had eight firefighters in attendance this year. Um, anywhere from less than one year of experience up to fifteen years of experience. And yeah, we've got a couple of pictures.
Pictures, get some visual.
That was our, that was our last, I'll get back to that one here in just a little bit.
Um, these guys first.
Amongst these eight, yep. We're missing one person. We have one person that wasn't able to make it to that picture. And we got one extra person in the picture as well. Um, but that is basically our crew that was in Topeka for several days. Of the eight of us that attended, we attended nine total different classes. We had multiple people that would attend multiple of the same classes. Um, we did reading smoke and reading buildings, those are two different classes, but it basically teaches us how to look at a building that's either on fire or could be on fire and determine what we need to do to resolve the salute, the situation. Uh, we also had some firefighters doing firefighter survival, which is rapid intervention team class. Basically, it's our own safety net. If something happens, we have the people to come in and get us in that situation. Um, we also had vehicle extrication, fairly self-explanatory for rescue stuff. We also had some leadership classes that many of us took, um, the keynote speaker. Uh, his speech was also basically leadership classes. He did a really great job. Uh, we also did access solutions, which is building entry. How do we get ourselves into a building? Uh, and in that class, it taught basically from a, a passive way to get in, least amount of damage to ultimate carnage, you might say. Um, and then we had one firefighter do firefighter rehab, which is kind of us taking care of our own people. Um, safety and self-defense. Once again, we're taking care of ourselves. That class taught people or taught firefighters how to be physically and mentally healthy as well as self-defense. Believe it or not, we as firefighters do occasionally need self-defense. Uh, and then we also had some members, I think we had might have been four of us that did the burn trailer. I was not one of them, but we had four members, I think, do the burn trailer, and that is what you would think it is. It is a live burn exercise. It is meant to replicate the environment of a structured fire. So it, it's, it's the safest possible way that we can put firefighters in danger without completely putting them in danger. It's, it's very good. Um, classes began Thursday morning, continued through Sunday afternoon. We did have I think three, maybe through Sunday, that stayed up there. Everyone was there for Thursday morning. Five stay. There's five stay, okay, yep. Um, this was all in Topeka, so it's, it's a little bit of a drive. We don't drive back and forth. Fortunately, the city, like I said, we, we're here to express our appreciation because you all take very good care of us.
Thank you guys so much. We really had a great time.
Yep.
Look, look like it.
Um, this, uh, being in Topeka is so close, it's about a two hour drive. Um, so it is nice being able to go someplace relatively close and have good quality training. Um, and they've actually been doing a great job of adding new classes that are relevant and, and very good. Um, most importantly, this is our out of department training. There was at least two classes I took that the point was really driven home to do out of department training, get out and train, as they said. They didn't just mean in our own department, they mean get out and train. Um, the history has shown within the fire service that we need to train outside of our own department to keep up to date with the calls we respond to. Our world is constantly changing and we must adapt and change with it. Um, so like I said, the common, the common theme is get out and train. Um, final thought, based on this picture here, um, I know the fire station is um, on discussion tonight, and I just want to leave you with this thought. It's not just a fire station, it's a firehouse. That was brought up in one of the classes I went to, and it really hit home. Um, we go there to build knowledge and competence for our chosen job, being firefighters. Uh, we also meet to build relationships with each other. So this is much more to our department than just a place to park trucks. So, final thought is thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone having questions or?
Questions.
You snapped that with the?
His long arm. That was Katie's feet. My arms are a lot longer than hers. So she is sitting next to my wife, so.
Gotcha.
Person tried to take the picture, that wasn't good.
It was a two-part photo with Katie. I was able to get this in your line.
There you go, there you go.
Any, any comments?
Um, I got one.
Okay.
Do you guys have that tool? It's like, I forget the name of, it's like a high lift jack that, that you can?
Jaws Alive?
No, it's manual.
Oh, no, um, we don't really have many manual tools actually, because they're a little um, I'll say slower, maybe less efficient. We, we have most of our tools that help us do things real quick.
One, one thing I'd like to point out, and if you'd be kind enough to share, Matt, you're not just a firefighter, you actually have some rank on the fire department.
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're a captain, and, uh, but you guys aren't full-time firefighters. So, uh, Billy, tell, tell everybody what you do when you're not fighting fires.
Um, I work on the steady lines and, uh, power equipment.
Okay, so you're part of the electric department?
Yeah.
Matt?
I work on the street department with Mr. Dale over there to try to keep the streets as relatively smooth as possible and as decent shape as possible.
Katie?
I work for Mary County, he is a mess full-time, so.
Okay, so you see the dedication, you know, that these folks have, not, uh, not only in their, in their firefighter role, which, which is not very financially, uh, rewarding, I'm gonna tell you right now. I think, what do, did we, did we ever give?
Twenty dollars a run?
Twenty dollars a run.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Sorry.
Just a thought.
Yeah, fair, right?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you again, guys, for letting us do that.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys more than you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you guys.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Nothing at this time?
Hydraulic hoses leak.
What's that?
Hydraulic hoses leak.
Okay.
You might forget one.
Okay, alright. So, with that, we will poke, close our first public comment opportunity and move into, uh, enterprise fleet management, and I believe we have Mr. Kenneth Olson uh, here this evening to, uh, to present, uh, something to us, and Mr. Stiles, if you'd care to introduce.
Yeah.
Mr. Olson, please.
So, yeah, Kenneth Olson is the regional, regional rep or whatever, I don't you cover Kansas along with pretty much everywhere else in, in Nebraska, uh, Kansas, Missouri, okay. Uh, so we had kind of been talking, well, we've internally been talking about what, what do we do with our fleet vehicles for a long time, and uh, Kenneth and I can, uh, connected late last year, I think, and then we managed to get a, a meeting together to talk about, was there some options that happened? Uh, things that we could potentially do, obviously from the analysis, you see we have, you know, a large number of vehicles that are very old, and we've not really been keeping up with replacements on a regular basis. Um, so Ken's got some, some options for us, uh, now, Enterprise is a huge company. Um, got lots of buying power and, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of expertise, I think, in the, in the automotive industry, so uh, they seem to be a pretty decent partner that we've, they've, they've worked with a lot of larger communities in Kansas, um. And we're, we're kind of on the small end, I think, as far as what that looks like, but, um, you know, we still fit, fit into the box for them, so something they work with, so uh, Ken took our information and then ran some analysis for us, and then he's gonna talk a little bit about some options that we would have if we want to partner with Enterprise. Uh, we're not really looking for any, any decision, you know, final decisions today, we're just current, trying to learn about it and see if this is something we want to continue to pursue. So, I turn it over to Ken.
Thank you, well completed.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me today, um, and certainly thank Matt for all the time and efforts that he has put in, along with, uh, Danielle and Dave and, or Dale and the, the rest of the staff that's been involved, so I really appreciate that. Um, from an, an agenda standpoint today, I really just wanted to, to walk through some of the core areas, high-level core areas of the program. Um, just discuss the vehicle and operational side, and then some key points on the um, fleet analysis that was put together for you all. Um, I'll try to speak timely, so I don't take too much of your time, so, but hit me with questions as we go. Um, and, and can certainly walk through any questions that you have. Uh, so just from a high-level standpoint, as Matt mentioned, we are part of the Enterprise family, you're probably familiar with us, um, from, from a rental car side, um, and on the fleet management division, we essentially leverage that infrastructure, so we've got a whole bunch of people tools. As Matt mentioned, we're pretty large, um, so from that standpoint, we, we have a, a lot of resources, and we leverage that to help entities like yours with what we consider small to medium-sized fleets. Um, you, you're on potentially the smaller side, as Matt mentioned, but our, our niche is twenty to three hundred vehicles, the average client has about forty to fifty vehicles in the fleet, so you're not far off, and we have a whole lot of clients that that, that are right at that twenty mark, um, and, and as you expand and grow, we, um, grow with you, if you will. Um, so from that standpoint, leverage all that to help, um, save money, operate more efficiently and effectively. From a role structure standpoint, really my role is just getting the partnerships established. So analyzing what you all are doing today, figuring out what pieces of the program would be a good fit, that's what we've done over the past couple of months here. Um, we do have the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Awards, so you're able to piggyback off all the different pieces of our program. And we'll talk more about that, and then from there, designing and customizing the strategy, financial structure, and really the, the operational side of the program. As the partnership would go live, um, we do have local, uh, account teams. Again, we're, we're all, for most of us are out of the, um, Kent City office and cover the whole state of Kansas. I do have a a gentleman out, out in Wichita that covers pretty much Salina on out west to the Colorado border, so either he would Kent City or Wichita would be your, your rep. Um, but from that standpoint, that, that person, um, your client's strategy manager will meet with you typically about four times per year. And the meetings are gonna be designed around your entity and your budget timeline, from a preparation, um, and, and when you need your budgets approved. Taking some of that off your staff and bringing some of those resources to them, so that they're very proactive and, and well-prepared. Um, and really the key piece there from a role perspective, we're not here to sell you guys vehicles. We are here for a partnership that's very relationship-based, and we want to be here at this table, working with your team multiple times per year. From a flexibility standpoint, Matt mentioned there's a, a quite a few entities, um, here in Kansas that we do business with. Um, just to name a few, and, and Matt knows a few of these folks, and I, I don't know if you got a chance to reach out to them or not yet, but so, the city of Salina, Unified Government, um, Emporia, with these three entities, they only use us for what I consider um, the, the vehicle side, so purchasing, upfitting, funding of some sort, and then resale. Uh, a few others, Great Bend, School District, Valley Center, Linsburg, um, Osawatomie, these are some entities that are more um, similar sized from a fleet perspective. Um, and with them, they use us for that vehicle side, but they also use our maintenance, our fuel. Next Tech, as I, I pulled in at the time, I saw Next Tech, we do all their vehicles. They use us for telematics, I believe they use our insurance, maintenance, fuel, the whole, the whole nine, right? So every entity looks a little bit different, even, and even down to the department level, maybe police looks a little different than public works, right? So it's very strategic operationally. On the strategy side, we did a two-year implementation in the model that we put together, but again, every entity implements this program a little bit different, so, um, with Jackson County on the Missouri side, we did a one-year rotation, so we flipped everything right out of the gate. Um, city of Salina, we did a three-year implementation. We actually started with a five-year from on paper and then changed that to a three-year strategy, and then Emporia, we did a five-year model, so eh, eh, how we roll this out, and, and we'll talk much more about that when we get into the analysis, the flexibility of it. But both on how we roll it out and what pieces of the program extremely flexible and can change. From a, really the, the biggest impact that we can bring to your entity is, is impacting your budget. Reducing your budget and doing more with less. As mentioned, we've got a whole bunch of vehicles that are certainly, um, getting, getting towards the end of their life, right? Um, and, and from that perspective, reducing your budget, operating more efficiently is really our goal. And from that perspective, really to, to paint a pi- the, the picture of what we truly are trying to accomplish, you all are able to buy these vehicles, well, as Matt mentioned, we have very strong relationships with the manufacturers from a buying power standpoint. You get government incentives, so very strong buying power on the front end. Enterprise sells over a million used vehicles every single year. We sell vehicles better than anyone on the back end. From there, we have an equity lease model, that's what's built into that analysis, there are a few different options. But we have an equity lease model that allows you to just pay for the portion that you're going to use essentially, and get in and out at the right time. So to give you an example of this, um, all of our entities that I, I named there, um, with the exception of Next Tech um, have rotated some of their vehicles out after, after twelve months. And with, I always give the example with the Unified Government, um, back in twenty twenty model year, we're buying F-two-fifties for about thirty-two thousand dollars. And we would fund them with our equity lease from thirty-two down to twenty-five thousand, so their total budget for that year was seven thousand dollars. We'd pick that vehicle up after twelve months, sell it for what ended up being about forty-eight thousand dollars. So they paid seven, got a check back for twenty-three, if you will, and then they took that and put that into an equipment reserve fund, and then paid for the next vehicle's payments, right? By the way, we sold thirty of their trucks on the front end, and put that equity from their client-owned vehicles into that fund to offset those costs moving forward. That's a very aggressive example. On some of your SUVs that'll work right now, not so much on the pickup trucks, we're gonna run those a little bit longer. Some of your, your three-quarter tons, maybe twelve or twenty-four, but you're gonna have vehicles at all different terms from twelve to sixty months, and that's gonna change on an annual basis. But really, that's the philosophy, is getting in and out at the right time and operating at the lowest cost of ownership. And instead of paying cash and running them till they're dead, leveraging our resources, our financial structure to get in and out at the right time. So, lot packed in there, certainly, um, any questions just from a high level before I get into the weeds on the vehicle side?
Um, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I know when it comes to maintenance and whatnot for the vehicles, um, would enter, Enterprise would be covering the maintenance or city is?
We have options, so, for, right now, from my understanding, what, what your entity is doing, roughly seventy percent of the maintenance is done externally, and then about thirty percent in-house. These vehicles, and, and that's just ballpark numbers, it could be more, it could be less, right? The newer vehicles, to be transparent with you, and why a lot of our entities are moving a segment of their fleet to our program, or become more of a computer, more technology, more diagnosis, than turning the wrenches, right? Just being transparent there, and from that perspective, you can absolutely keep everything in-house, or you can outsource and keep us out of it completely. So that's one option. We have a maintenance management program that we can apply to every vehicle on the fleet, day one, regardless of age, regardless of mileage. That truck that's sitting outside, um, we can put it on immediately, per Sourcewell, it's six dollars per month per vehicle. And then all maintenance is passed through to you. We will have our ASC certified technicians manage that process, so we go to the local dealership, local shop. Uh, that technician contacts our ASC certified technicians, we make sure it's the right maintenance, right interval. We have negotiated pricing, we pay the bill wherever they go, so maybe fires on that trip in Topeka, right? And we'll pay the bill wherever they go and get that maintenance done, and then you get one monthly consolidated bill, and that can be cost-coded out per department. The benefit of that is, not only is there efficiencies and savings from us managing that process, but we also get that data. And now we know what you buy and sell them for, but now we also know your maintenance costs, and it starts to come together from a total cost of ownership perspective. As the new vehicles arrive, we have a fix full maintenance program, where we can fix your costs for the duration of the term, whether it's that twelve-month structure or an F-three-fifty with a utility bed that we're running out sixty months plus, we'll fix your costs for the duration of the term. We typically leave outbreaks and tires, because we're most often getting out of these vehicles before that, but we'll cover all preventative and all non-pre preventative. And the warranties of, of course, are passed through to you, so warranty would, would be done as well. Uh, so really, three different options, keep us out of it, pay as you go, or the full maintenance fix. And that can change per department as well.
Okay. Um, and, so I'm not trying to, uh, do too much here.
Absolutely.
Um, and so if I understand correctly, is releasing the vehicles from Enterprise, and once it gets down to the end of the life, Enterprises, uh, would sell the vehicle, i- is, is that correct, and then, um, we would get a portion?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So we can sell both your existing fleet as well as the Enterprise vehicles. Um, and when we sell those units, the twenty-year-old truck that's on that list, that'll probably go through our auction channel, just being transparent with you. Uh, we have, we have a lane at the Manheim Auction, or if you guys have, wanna give rid of that vehicle, however you purbley, whatever you're doing, that's okay. Um, so from an age standpoint, we will absolutely help you sell those vehicles, but then the newer vehicles and the Enterprise vehicles that are coming in, we are selling those units direct to our wholesaling franchise buyers that buy not only all of our fleet management vehicles, but all of our rental cars as well. So we have a team, Kent City, Wichita, Colorado, et cetera. And that's, their sole job is to sell the vehicles, direct to our buyers, they're not, on average, they're coming in ninety, ten percent above the commercial value index, uh, which is essentially auction value, but as you mentioned, we're analyzing when's the right time to get out of that vehicle, whether it's twelve months, thirty-six, sixty, and analyzing, then that goes back to you. But that also flows through, to answer your question, on a financial perspective, when we have these vehicles on lease, we do have three different options. We have a, a net lease, which I'll never recommend to you, that there's fees, penalties, we keep the equity, kind of your standard, traditional-type lease. Um, we have a self-fund that you can pay cash, there's no interest component. When we sell the vehicle, you get all the equity, we're still selling it as an Enterprise vehicle, we hold title. We keep it on the books for a dollar, but that equity lease that we're talking about, that, and that's in your analysis packet, um, with that, it's basically a bank finance to a residual, so if we fund that again from thirty-two thousand down to twenty-five thousand, and then once we sell that vehicle for, let's just call it fifty thousand dollars, you get that equity of twenty-five thousand dollars. And with that, there's no fees for wear and tear, early termination, over mileage, maybe put on thirty instead of ten thousand this year. Well, you're gonna get a little less equity, right? But it's all, i- it's very flexible, and it, it's your equity when we sell that unit.
So, and then last question would be, so if we do have a vehicle that one way or another gets some type of catastrophic failure to it, or, you know, the value is completely totaled. Um, since, wouldn't necessarily be able to sell that for anything reasonable, would the city have to pay for the difference, or how would that, um, work out?
So, yes, if there's a, so a couple different answers there, so most likely that would fall under insurance, right? So from that standpoint, the same process would occur. Uh, we do have insurance available, but if you're using your, your current policy, um, we would be made whole, a whole. We are listed on the certificate of insurance as an additional insured, were made whole, and then any equity on top of that, or any value on top of that would go back to the city. So, most cases, that would happen from a, um, you know, engine, transmission, if you're on that full maintenance program, it's, it's covered no matter what. If it's not on that, and it's just on maintenance management, we get a tremendous amount of goodwill from the manufacturers, being that we have very strong relationships with them, and we're tracking every single transaction from a maintenance perspective, so there's a couple different ways there. Eh, but I'm assuming you're talking more on the insurance side.
Hmm, okay.
But in the, in the absence of a, of an insurance issue, if it goes back onto the market, gets resold for simply a market value less than the, the equity threshold that you've, that you've assigned to the vehicle, is there a scenario in which, when it goes to sale, the city actually has to pay more than they've already paid for those vehicles?
A- absolutely, right? If the, if you're upside down on the vehicle, then you're upside down. What I will tell you is, from an Enterprise perspective, we're a family-owned company, we're ridiculously conservative, so we are going to depreciate these vehicles based on the vehicle's term, mileage, buying power, purchase cost, and resale ability. We're gonna put you in an equitable position at term. Now, if we get thirty, if we're thirty-six months, and we, we wanted to sell that vehicle at thirty-six months, we had a recession, the market crashes, whatever that be, we have the option to extend that longer, and that's where your client strategy manager is going to be meeting with you so frequently. We know your residuals, we know what the market value is, we're gonna make those recommendations to extend that vehicle out longer and depreciate that vehicle down further, to put you in an equitable position, and to put you at a position where it's the lowest cost of ownership.
Is that equity threshold calculated at the time that the, when it's new and provided to the city, or, or at the time that it's getting I guess, put back on the, or, or it's looking at putting it back out in the market?
So, both, because I'm analyzing that on the front end, putting you in a, trying to put you in a good position from, from an equity perspective at term, based upon the recommendation. Again, some will be set up at twelve months, some at sixty months, et cetera. So I'm gonna put you in that position out of the gate with my finance team, and with my remarketing team, so that you're in a healthy position. But then from a quarterly basis, we're gonna be meeting with you and making those recommendations, hey, we need to get out of this vehicle sooner, because the market value went up, and we're in a better position, or hey, we need to extend out longer because the market went down, the vehicle got beat up, whatever it be. And, and we have that flexibility both ways to get in and out of these vehicles at the right.
And so things like mileage would go in, into those calculations as well, right? Because obviously, that's a, a huge factor in the market value at any point in time.
Absolutely, and police is gonna have far higher mileage than public works or administration, or whatever that be. And we have that built into that analysis in your packet, um, but that can change as well, right? Because you, we, we might set the, let's just say, the admin unit that, that we're bringing in, maybe we have a couple extra trips this year, or we, we had to get rid of a different vehicle and use it more, and again, if we put fifteen instead of five thousand miles on that vehicle, well, maybe that changes the structure, but typically with your mileage pattern, you have very low, I believe it's, um, five thousand miles per year is your average annual mileage, though, there, there's not gonna be a situation where we're putting on fifty thousand, like the Next Techs of the world, where, you know, they might have, we might have set a truck up for twenty-five, and that driver put on fifty thousand, it's far less, um, of, of a delta from there. But we do have that flexibility built in, because we want you to be able to get out sooner. If we can flip that vehicle every year and, and pay you to operate that vehicle essentially, we'll make that recommendation. But, if you need to extend out longer, we want you to have that flexibility as well to get out of, and, and extend that lease out longer. The other, one last piece on that is, we can also put role equity, so if we take the vehicles from the, the the client-owned vehicles that you have today, and we put that as a down payment, that's putting you in a better equitable position right out of the gate. To, so when we sell that vehicle, there's more equity into that unit.
So, a couple of things. One of the strengths of, of this community is the fact that we actually have two car dealers.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we try to make sure that we purchase locally as much as we can. Uh, you know, sometimes depending on the type of vehicle, you know, we haven't been able to necessarily get two bids. Uh, that said, I, I know that on those government programs, there's not much meat on the bone for the car dealer, you know, when they participate in selling us a new vehicle.
That actually isn't entirely inaccurate.
Uh, You said it's entirely inaccurate?
No, not entirely, sorry, no. Uh, government does give, I mean, yeah, they do give, you know, incentives, but they also help the dealers out as well.
So, so, and then, uh, then, then there's another component, that's the service component, which we use local dealers for, for service quite often.
Yes, sir.
And then on our agenda tonight, for example, we have four thousand dollars, forty-two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents worth of maintenance to the local Ford dealership, so.
So, on, on that, that's a great point, and majority of, we have a massive, we haven't really talked about the acquisition side yet, but we have a massive network of dealer partners that, that Enterprise partners with. We buy vehicles on the rental side, we buy vehicles on the fleet management side, I've been on the phone all day with dealers to, to literally find in a Yukon XL Denali, so from that standpoint, we are, we are buying vehicles from dealers on a daily basis. Um, I personally have probably bought five hundred to a thousand vehicles from dealers last year, okay? Now, there's recommendation to you, but if there's an immediate need scenario, like there's been cases in the past three or four years with challenges in the, in the auto industry, we have those available, whether they're coming off lease, whether the rental cars, we've got a lot of availability there. Again, given your buying power, almost never it makes sense for you guys to buy a used vehicle. We do have the largest dealership network in the country. Again, we deliver our vehicles to these dealers. I'll talk more about that in a moment, but that's one of the ways that we keep our local folks in, in the loop. Um, we buy vehicles from dealerships, as I just mentioned, we have our maintenance facilities, et cetera. Again, probably ninety-five percent of our vehicles throughout the country, both on the government and commercial side, are coming direct from the manufacturers. Okay, so we've got Ford, Ram, Chevy, all the other brands, every option, every feature, every ma- every make, every model, okay? So when we order these vehicles, we'll get them to an aftermarket vendor, get them outfitted, whether it's Hillsborough flatbed, or it's a, a napid body, or a SIR police car, or whatever it be, we'll get that vehicle outfitted, and then we will get them delivered to the local dealerships, and they get a courtesy delivery fee for us delivering those units. Now, what I will tell you is best case scenario is you guys are buying one point five vehicles a year from these local dealerships. You are absolutely not keeping it, them in business. You're right, that in most dealerships that we partner with will tell you they're not, they're not getting as much, I'm not saying they're not making money, but not getting as much money from a government entity as a commercial entity, um, or a retail entity. Um, but from that perspective, we still wanna keep them in, involved, right? And, and they're, they're a big part of your community and I absolutely respect that. So I knew that coming in this meeting. Um, and, and I one hundred percent respect that and, and wanna partner with those entities. Um, and next year, if we bring in fifteen vehicles, they're probably gonna make more money on those fifteen than the one point five vehicles that you potentially were going to buy this year. And there's two dealerships in town, so maybe one vehicle from one of them this year, right?
Sure.
So that, that's a, a big piece from a delivery standpoint. We can put their, their sticker on it, put the bracket on it. All that stays the same from a delivery standpoint. And then instead of having an average of eighteen year fleet run around town, now they've got a much newer, more advertising from, from a vehicle perspective, and a lot of different ways that we can actually benefit and work together um, as a team. Then you think about from a maintenance perspective, our program will leverage those local dealerships, okay? Next town can go to that local dealership, right? I, I don't know for sure if they're on, I, I
They are.
They are on there. Um, so right out of the gate, that process from a, a maintenance perspective, where your existing vehicles and the in, enterprise vehicles will stay intact and still, we want those relationships to, to still be there.
Okay, and then secondly, if uh, and I understand that, and you know, you also understand that this is a political body and, and there's optics involved.
Yes, sir.
I, I think, I think I heard that in your, in your comments. But lastly, and if you wanna save this to the end of your presentation, we can. But let's just say, at some point, we get into this program, and then for whatever reason, I'm not even gonna pos- posit a, a possible reason, we wanna end the relationship.
Divorce before marriage.
Right, right. So, so what, you know, what might that look like? And, and again, you don't have to address that now.
I, I absolutely will. Um, and I make that joke because this comes up very often in council meetings, probably once a week, and it comes up almost every time. Uh, so it's a great question. Um, and, and it goes back to the flexi- flexibility of that equity lease model. Okay, so again, if we're at a thirty-six month, thirty-six month term on a one vehicle basis, okay? So there is a master agreement, and that's just an overarching agreement that allows us to do business. The individual vehicles are really the financial aspect of, of the, the contract. So we're at thirty-six month term, we owe twenty thousand dollars. We have three different options to get out of that vehicle. One, I pick it up, sell it on your behalf, give you the equity. You do not replace that vehicle with enterprise. So that's one option, go buy another vehicle, don't replace it, do replace it, whatever you wanna do. But that being said, you have to go buy another vehicle if we sell that, right? Option B um, would be to pay off that remaining balance. You owe twenty thousand dollars, write us a check, boom, here's a title. We don't wanna send the team out here four times a year if you guys don't wanna talk to them, okay? The third option, maybe, but it, once we have twenty vehicles, that's a, a heavy check to, for twenty times twenty thousand dollar average, let's say. That, that's a big check to write for, to, to get out of the program. What would probably happen would be you depreciate those vehicles another two, three years until they're fully depreciated. And then part ways at that time once they're fully depreciated. So we have that flexibility not to, not to allow you to get out of this program type deal, but to do what's best for your entity at every given point. Okay, and that's where a- again, we can put ninety-nine percent down and put you at a one dollar balance if you wanted to, right? So we've got all the flexibility in the world, but really those are three options of how we could part ways if it didn't make sense. Um, but in addition to that, based on, we have every option that you can imagine from what, again, used, inventory, factory order, pool of vehicles, we have every option that you wanted from a pay standpoint, self fund, equity lease, net lease, sell vehicles, you can sell them on your own, have us sell them, all the different maintenance options, all different fuel options, et cetera. So we can customize that if things change, and that's one thing, once we get into this analysis packet, this is gonna change, right? Next year, we didn't expect COVID to happen, we didn't expect the shortages to happen. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. We're certainly going to predict and forecast and, and estimate, but things are absolutely going to change. And that's why first and foremost, once we look at this, I do not want you to budget based off, up on this. I will walk through with each of the, the different department heads, we'll make sure we have every option, every feature, give you the pricing for that exact vehicle. This is high level proof of concept. And then just know, next year, we might get out earlier, extend out longer. That's your choice, but we're gonna give you the recommendations to help you do what's best, not only today, but every step of the way moving forward. And that's where all those entities that I shared with you, what they will tell you is things do change, things will change, and we will bring the best recommendation at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Only other thing we haven't talked about operationally yet, um, is our fuel program. Um, we do have the WEX fuel cards. I know you're using the local station, I just filled up at Casey's when I pulled in. They're a universal card. Again, the benef- and there's no, no card cost, no monthly cost, five cent per gallon discount at Phillips and Conoco locations. Um, they're universal, use them anywhere. The benefit to us is that we get that data. So now we know what you buy and sell, we know the maintenance, we know the fuel, and it all starts to come together, right? Operationally, you don't have to get receipts, you put in your odometer, that flows to our enterprise dashboard, keeps our odometers up to date. You'll be able to see your fuel information. That program speaks to the maintenance program, sends your driver's alerts and sends your leadership and your staff alerts, when to go get that oil change. Um, and it, it all is integrated through our website that you have access to. And then our team is leveraging in our analysis and bringing recommendations to your tape. We do have telematics devices. Again, it's integrated through our system, speaks to our WEX program, that's GPS tracking, logistics, and vehicle alerts, et cetera. Same with insurance, we have all those available. So all of that's à la carte. It's all customized around what makes sense, it can change over the years. Technology is becoming more and more prevalent in, in this space. Um, and, and as you, you change and as the, the world changes, we have those resources available at all times. Any of those areas you want me to dive a little bit deeper on?
Straightforward. The uh, the, the fuel program. We've had, uh, we've had instances in the past, very, very infrequently where we had an issue with, with somebody not putting fuel in the right vehicle.
Yep.
We'll just say it that way. You know, that's something that we monitor internally, you know, and so how, how does, how does that, how, you know, how do we have, do we have any oversight over?
Absolutely. So you'll see all that, you'll have, there'll be exceptions. So if, if that, that car is tied to that vehicle, that VIN number, and that's how the integration gets passed through to our system, and we will send you alerts if, or WEX will send you alerts if there is a, uh, if that, that sort of thing is happening, you'll be able to see the, the different transactions. So maybe somebody's putting in the wrong odometer, they're just putting one hundred or whatnot to get, because they can do that. It, it will send alerts and notifications, and then you can monitor that.
Okay. Very good.
Yes, sir. Same from a, a maintenance perspective on the website, again, you'll be able to see every single transaction, you'll get alerts for those. There, it's, everything's customized, whether you want just on the dashboard, you want text, you want email, all that stuff. Our, our, on our quarterly meetings, we're bringing those reports out to you. Say, this vehicle hasn't got an oil change in ten thousand miles, you might wanna check it out, something's going on, a lot of security measures.
So, for example, then, so what you're saying is Dale's got his pickup, he goes to fuel up, he's got his WEX card, what, that's what you, what you said. And he, and he uses it. Where does he input the, the odometer information? How does that get uploaded?
So it pops up on the, on the pump, it'll, it'll say ask for your odometer, you put in your odometer, and then it'll ask for your pen code. So you know, who, you know, Dale used it at Casey's, and he popped it on.
Really? Cool.
Very good.
Yep. No, I just wondered how, how much, you know, how much extra, extra effort was it gonna be to, to fuel up your vehicle? It doesn't sound like a ton, but.
It's pretty easy. I, I mean, I've used it, I've never had it not work either, and, and I go everywhere you can imagine. And it's, it's a universal card, but um.
It's not gonna work at Joe's filling station, I'm just telling you right now.
Joe's.
I don't want to stop.
We still have, we still have a, have a, yeah. Fueling full, full, full service fuel stop that doesn't, uh, that doesn't have electronic pumps.
I, I'll have to try it out.
Mo will wash your windshield, fill up your, fill up your vehicle, take your credit card out the window. But anyway, that, that's beside the point. Sorry.
No, absolutely. Um.
So I'm looking at the, at the, at the, kind of the, I, I, the program, if you will, we're, we're, we're talking about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of savings over ten years. That's kind of the initial first, first blush, right?
Yeah, and, and I wanna be transparent with you, and Danielle and I looked at this in, in the last meeting, there, there are more vehicles in your fleet than what's on this list, okay? Um, the, there, there's roughly thirteen, I analyzed it, and I, I'm not saying it's perfect. I, I saw thirteen. Um, and then about fourteen units, and we have twenty-one in the model. So there's fourteen units that are, you know, fire trucks and heavy duty and, and et cetera, that aren't in this model and they don't make sense. And we might even pull one, one or two of these after we talk about what's going on them. Might even pull this out and have a little different structure on them, because we might run them longer than five years, right? In this model, these vehicles are the vehicles that can come in and out of the fleet at a pretty quick pace, you know, max five years on most of these. Um, the, these vehicles would be rotated in, in and out of the fleet by that point. If you, unless you decide, hey, no, we won't, we don't wanna do that, then we, we can extend them out longer. But these vehicles fit really well in the modeling. Um, the, on the fleet profile, just a, that's the first page there, the first um, first slide, it looks like this. So what that is, um, what, what that is trying to show, um, is what you all are doing today without enterprise, just in, in general, just an overview of the fleet. So you've got twenty-one vehicles that we're looking at here. The average age is eighteen point three years, so pretty aged now. Um, five thousand miles is the average annual mileage. Our recommendation, as I mentioned, a two-year implementation, fifteen the first year, six the second year. That being said, we did talk about it, there's a lot more equity in those six vehicles than the fifteen that we're replacing, that we're recommending to replace year one. So potentially shifting some buckets around, leveraging some of that equity to jumpstart the program. Again, we have entities that wanna flip all twenty-one and leverage all of that equity, or maybe we wanna spread this out and do five year for the next four years, or four year for the next five years, right? So we, we can change this model, as I mentioned before. Um, and, and this is just a, an initial recommendation, again, based upon the age and mileage of your vehicles. Uh, we, we do have a more aggressive model because they are fairly aged at, at this point. Um, I always like to look at the, the bottom graph. You'll see sixteen vehicles that are over ten years of age, and you will see ten vehicles that are over twenty years of age. Um, so from, from that perspective, and me, Matt and I have talked about this a little bit, and I talked with the team about this, we really don't have to save a ton of money in this situation to bring a lot of value and a lot of efficiencies, less downtime, driver morale, safety, image, all those different components to the table. So even at a wash, um, there, there's a lot of benefits that will come from getting rid of those vehicles in that red box that are over ten years of age, which is the majority of the fleet today. When we, when I look at this, again, I do this pretty much on a daily basis, um, often see very light acquisitions, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. You know, some of that, those vehicles could be replaced, some of that could have changed. Um, we've seen some peaks and some valleys. We all, we also are seeing very light acquisitions from twenty twenty on to, today, just given COVID and the supply chain and everything else. So just some good historical data and some good talking points. Um, but again, at the end of the day, if we can replace all of your vehicles from essentially two thousand nineteen on out into the first five years, there's a lot of benefits that come with that. But again, just an overview. Um, on that next slide, um, the fleet analysis portion, um, what that is trying to do with that orange line there is really show, based upon the assumptions above and the vehicles that we're operating, what you all are currently doing today. And realistically, you're buying one or two vehicles a year. Um, you own your fleet, you're purchasing them, um, outright paying cash, that's that sixty thousand dollar estimate, potentially paying more than that on some of these vehicles. Um, your, your maintenance is high, we just mentioned a four or five thousand dollar maintenance bill a night. Um, your, your fuel, and then your total budget is at one thirty-five. That's your capital budget and your operating budget combined, and that's really what we're using as a baseline. Then we have the enterprise vehicles rolling in, year twenty-four there, that's your first year. The lease column, immediately day one, you're spending more than your one point five purchases per year, okay? But we have fifty-six thousand dollars coming back in equity from our client owned vehicles. And then after twelve months, we're selling a portion of the enterprise vehicles for eighty thousand dollars. Our maintenance comes down immediately because we have fifteen brand new vehicles, our fuel starts to take down. Um, most often, we are going to beat this, we estimated a twenty percent increase in fuel economy. Um, vehicles are far better today than twenty years ago from a fuel economy standpoint. Um, so pretty conservative there. Um, confident on that number, those numbers. So year one, your total fleet budget is sixty-seven five. So if we take your historical average budget of one fifty, one thirty-six, we subtract that sixty-eight, that's a savings opportunity or a net cash of sixty-eight thousand. Now, there are years where we're going to cost you more, okay, than what you're spending today. But over a ten year span, and with all of this factored in, there's a twenty-six thousand dollar savings. So essentially, a break even from that perspective. And the biggest thing I always wanna make sure you understand is that we have to leverage the equity from the sale proceeds to offset our costs for the lease payments, and we have to replenish that equipment reserve fund as immediately we are spending more from a budget perspective from our capital outlay standpoint. Lot of numbers there, a whole lot to dig- digest, just in, just in general. Uh, but really, that, that's the proof of concept, that's the philosophy. Our team, our goal is to beat this analysis, and that's why we have our team coming out so frequently and meeting with you on a regular basis, is to beat this and grow as you, you know, we talked about a growth unit potentially, and maybe at some point the police needs to grow the fleet, or we hire, hire another employer, whatever it be. We wanna be here to work through that, um, and, and, and help you guys in every situation.
So, maybe to summarize that a little bit, what, what I'm hearing you say is we could be operating a fleet that's three years old or less, or approximately the same amount of money we're spending today.
Wow.
Okay. All right. Well, what's it gonna take to get us into that fleet today? That's always the car, car question, right?
Classic car salesman.
Been, been on the phone all day.
I'm sorry.
But that, all the At that same time, we have a lot of, things are getting better from the industry in general. Um, we have a lot of entities that we, we've partnered with recently that have implemented a lot of vehicles, and they've seen vehicles come within two to three months. So from that perspective, it's getting much more uh, quick to get vehicles than waiting, you know, so, so we're and again, that comes down to some of our resources, whether we're doing our pool of vehicles, our inventory that we have in, in, in stock, or whatever that be, but um, it, it, we, we, again, the getting started is kind of the hardest part, right? Because like a Mercy, we're in between twenty-four and twenty-five mile a year. And, you know, and, and that's where, once this program's up and running, I'll give you an example. So City of Salina. I'll give you an example, so City of Salina, I know Matt Matt knows them over there, and they partnered with us before COVID hit. And they had a hundred vehicles, let's call it in the fleet, that were brand new, ready to rock. So they didn't care when their vehicle took an extra year to come in, right? So that's from a long term standpoint, if we're at a two year average age, you really don't care if it takes a few extra months. And and if we hit situations like we've been in, and it gives you the flexi- the flexibility to to do what's. Any other questions?
Um, I do have another question, um. Uh, it's mentioned that our, um, I don't, what's the car exactly? Um, uh, strategy manager will meet at least four times per year. How quickly can we expect a response, you know, something drastic does happen in the market that could warrant, you know, changing how we're doing it? How quickly could we expect to hear from the strategy manager?
So that's their sole job, that each stra- each strategy manager has roughly forty to fifty accounts. Um, that that we do, but you know, that they have in their book. Um, you you're going, in in addition to that, you're also gonna have a day to day contact, there's an account fleet coordinator. That will be your administrative person, and they work as a team, and they talk every single day, so you'll have both of their contacts. You'll have the strategy manager's cell phone, you'll have my cell phone, you'll have my director's cell phone, my area manager's cell phone, our finance director's cell phone. You're gonna have a whole list of folks that you will hear back from them within, I I mean, if if they're not getting in touch within four hours, something's wrong. So that is, we're we're based on what our our baseline is, our customer service. And that's what we, enterprise as a whole, go to our enterprise service quality index. And if we were pass fail, if we're not, if you're not completely satisfied, we lose points. A- and that goes against my measurements, our client strategy managers' measurements, our group as a whole, and that's how we we quantify that. Um, so it's very, very important to us, but um, to answer your question, if if midday and end of the day, they have to have their responses there.
Okay, so, um, I guess. For example, so just tying together what you said, so I don't know, um. Sorry, trying to figure out what I want to phrase it. So anything from along the lines of, you know, um, factory recalls for X reason? Or, you know, something else happens in the market, we can expect a response within the day that occurs, okay?
And and I'm not gonna say we're gonna have a solution that.
Yeah, yeah.
Things are, things are gonna change, things are, we're we're most definitely not perfect, right? We've, over these past years, we've experienced a tremendous amount of challenges, delays, cancellations, everything else, right? But what we will do is we will be responsive, and we will help you figure out what's next after that situation occurs.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, well, kind of thank you so much.
Appreciate you being here, thanks for all the work you've done, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Styles, uh, I guess, uh, the the question then is, uh, what's next?
Well, depends on what you want to do, if you want to talk a little bit more, uh, we, you know, there's obviously the contracts that have to be negotiated out. We'd have to have, there, we made no formal decision, so.
Right.
Um, if this is a road you want to go down, then we would just need a little direction to do that. Um, I think Andrew, in talking with him, that we, they've negotiated these contracts to to make them appropriate. Um, before in other places, so, um, you'd actually.
Have you had a chance to talk to the owners of the local dealerships?
Not yet, no. Need to do that.
I I think that needs to be done, I also think maybe a little investigation, I'm sure. Again, these are a very large company, but I'm sure they're not the only company in the space.
They're not.
And I want to make sure that, you know, we're not just, you know, taking the first deal that comes along. This may be, this may be the deal, this may be the best deal, but I think it behooves us to investigate, do a little deeper dive, maybe. I think, you know, this sure clearly shows us that we have a way to address this aging fleet. And that's super critical, that needs to be done. And, uh, you know, now that we know that there are people out there that can help us do that in a fairly short order, I think we need to maybe look around.
Yeah, we do that, so.
That's no problem.
Yeah, we can bring some options back, um. Yeah, we'll we'll talk to everybody locally and then, you know, do a little due diligence to see if we can find that comparison, uh, maybe another.
One of the things that, uh, you know, that I that I think we have to, you know, one of the reasons that that a. Company like this would be somewhat attractive is it gives us a flexibility to not be set on one particular brand of vehicle. You know, it it covers the gamut of all the major, major US brands. And if we chose to work with, let's just say Midway said, well, we can put a program like this together. Or Hillsborough Ford said, we could put a program like this together, unfortunately, I think that would lock us into one particular flavor of vehicle. And I'm not sure that would be in our best interest.
Be, that would be challenging, I think, yeah, I think you want to try to spread, be as equitable as possible.
But as long as we can involve them in this program somehow, and it sounds like, you know, with this one, we could. You know, there would be something there for them, and you know, potentially, they could still be doing the warranty work and and service work. You know, that 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 might make some sense, but I agree, we need to talk to them, and I'm certainly willing to do that with you if you'd like. So, that's something Matt and I will do, we'll make sure that we reach out to both Hillsborough Ford and Midway Motors. That's good. And then, uh, I think we need to keep the ball rolling on this, and.
Yeah, we can.
Maybe, you know, I can, you can, I don't want to, I don't want to start doing your job, but I mean, you know, we may, we may need to. Well, yeah, but I mean, in terms of seeing who else is out there that might be able to offer us some.
Similar service.
Some similar service. Does that make sense? Any other comments or direction from the council?
It's good to meet, yeah, I mean.
But yeah, I think, you know, I, every time I look at to, at at our fleet, and especially some of these vehicles, like some of those old Dodge Ram, Ram fifties.
That's pretty, uh, that's a pretty tough one, we were getting to the point where we're having trouble sourcing parts for some of those things are sold, so. It is an issue, we gotta, we have to.
Yeah, all right, any other comments before we move on? Uh, we now have item E, which is an annual department head report, and we have Mr. Dale Dahlke, head of our street department. Dale, if you can get right enough to come up.
Good evening, good evening, welcome. My name's Dale Dahlke, for those of you that don't know me, I've been with the city, I've been the city street superintendent, that's what I'm saying, since May two thousand seven. Um, so, as of this year in May, I will have been here seventeen years. Recently, I lost one of my guys who transferred to the city water sewer department. So that got me thinking about how many different people that I have worked with in the street department. Uh, we usually have a crew of three or four in the street department, including myself, and once for a short time had a crew of five. So I wrote down the names of everyone I could remember, I wrote down eighteen names of full time people. And four part time summer hires, just within the street department since two thousand seven. I also have hired two full time people for the trash department, which I was in charge of for, um, a couple of years, but I'm not anymore. Um, of all those twenty four names, I'm most grateful for Matt Heine, who was here earlier, um, who has been with the street department for ten years now. The other street department crew member I have currently is Weston Geisberg, who has been with me for a little less than a year. Um, I'm not sure what all of this, these names say, um, other than had quite a bit of turnover in the last seventeen years. Probably says other things, but, um, anyway, it just was interesting for me to, um, realize how many people kind of come and gone within the street department. Um, within the last year, we've been very busy, um, we finished the splash park and made it operational. Um, that was a good project, long project, but, um, that was finally done. Uh, we prepped Main Street and Grand Avenue, then hired a contractor to seal the asphalt streets downtown. Um, we've trimmed some trees, patched many, many potholes, and blade patched, um, many rough spots in other asphalt, uh, declining asphalt streets. Um, kept up with mowing last year, um, recently, we've, this winter, we plowed some serious snow for the first time in years. And which reminded us that we need to update our ninety three plow truck and some other snow removal equipment. We were fortunate enough to acquire some equipment last year, we bought a new two S tandem axle dump truck. Um, which we were in need of, and a small, new, small utility tractor. With the snow freezing thaw cycles this winter, all of our gravel roads became rutted and very sloppy. We are currently receiving rock, and we will be reshaping and re-rocking those gravel roads this spring. Um, we've also already rebuilt the, uh, sewer road and the path to the Baumgartzel lift station for the sewer department. Um, recently, we've been crack sealing, maybe you've seen us around town with hot tar, and hope to, um, continue to do more sealing, weather permitting. In a couple of weeks or so. This past year, we replaced a large number of street signs that were faded. Um, other miscellaneous tasks that we perform on a regular basis are compost site maintenance, burn site maintenance. Occasional airport maintenance, alley grading, repair, maintenance on city equipment, and helping other departments from time to time. I'm looking forward to seeing a new street paved on Adam Street, which we have planned this summer. Um, I'm hopeful that the city can also bring new pavement to South Lincoln, South Wilson. And other other streets that are in desperate need of reconstruction. When I am planning to have our concrete rubble pile crushed within a month or two, so we have base material for these street reconstruction projects. Um, we need to have a contractor perform some asphalt overlays on some streets that are losing their integrity. And have those same streets chip sealed, along with other streets that need chip sealing. I'm wanting to have this work done next year, so we can accumulate more money through special highway fund to have a larger project completed. Um, we could do it this year, but it would be a smaller project, I just maybe wanted to save up and do a little bigger project next year. We've kind of done that same concept before. Some miscellaneous tasks I want to work on this year are downtown brick leveling and flower planter irrigation downtown. Uh, the south pond leveling near the Adobe House, uh, numerous sidewalk replacements throughout town. New sidewalk construction, possibly, we've talked about it before, but like towards, uh. Uh, Sonic in that area, I don't know if that'll happen, but it's a good idea anyway. And street department office addition, um, just a thought there. I would like to add offices to our street shop, and then where our offices are would become more shop space. Um, more street trimming, s- street tree trimming, crosswalk markings, ditch grading, many more projects. Um, is there any questions?
I have a question, you mentioned the leveling the south pond, maybe you could describe a little more what you mean by that.
So there's two ponds at the Adobe House, um, it's drainage water from the streets and kind of that quadrant of town. The south pond has become more of an eyesore, it's silted in, the water is maybe a foot deep, maybe a little more or less, different times of the year. Um, I don't know that there's really a need for a pond there for water retention. Um, the water comes in and out so fast anyway, it's not really holding it back. Um, it's eroded around the edges, um, there's varmints there that are digging holes and, um, it's just an eyesore.
So it's the one that's in the park next to the?
Yeah, the furthest one's south, so, uh, closest to the park.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, gotcha.
So are you, would would you have some kind of a pipe, pipe go underneath it then?
Yeah, that's something we need to talk about, we need to talk about kind of the scope of what would we do with the, that area where the pond is. Would it serve a function or just a green space, just grass, plant trees, have others, some type of, uh, activity area, you know, equipment? And then go from there, whether it be a underground piping for the water that flows through there, or an open ditch. Yeah, I mean, the 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 possibilities are whatever we want to make it.
Sure, probably, yeah, we just want to make sure that we're not creating a a problem downstream for on the golf course, for sure. But but, you know, it's interesting because that's one of those areas of town that I get, that I get complaints on. And then I said, you know, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing, which is as you described, and oh, no, I don't, I don't want to give up that pond, it's like. We can't keep it dredged out.
Well, yeah.
You know, we can't keep the weeds and and the moss and everything else out of there. The water that's coming into those ponds off the streets is not conducive to growing fish, although there are fish in there. Yeah, it's not, uh, it's not the most, it's not really a place to to have a fish pond, if you will. So, you know, I think, I think having, you know, coming up with an idea, I would be interested to hear maybe what Jerry and the. And Avery might might have in mind, you know, in terms of rec and 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 stuff, you know, maybe to use that space.
Right, I mean, I think, yeah, some conversations with multiple people would be great, because I don't want to just have to decide what's gonna happen. I mean, we could level it, just leave it.
Sure.
Kind of a blank slate, um, but, you know, if we knew what, uh, what it might want to look like, then we can maybe do it all in one.
Sure.
Fell swoop, um, the upper pond, we did dredge out quite a few years ago, I don't remember if that's been ten or any.
But it looks nice, and if for whatever reason.
Fixed the banks, because it was all pretty.
Rip wrapped and 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 it doesn't seem to to grow the moss and everything else that that the other one does.
It'll probably need some tension at some point again, but, yeah, the lower one, and the lower one did have a water line that ran right through the middle of it, buried underground. So that pond has been neglected, partly because now that water line has been replaced, it's not under the pond anymore, but that was. Not to make excuses, a little bit of a hindrance for doing any dredging in that lower pond in years past, that's the reason it was left alone.
There's, there's no excuses needed, because we we, you guys do a lot, a lot of stuff, and, you know, and and. Before, uh, before we say anything else, I do want to offer my extreme thanks for the work that was done. On the community plaza and the splash pad, and I've had nothing but compliments for that project. And and even, even with the grass that you got going on the north side, which is going to be our amphitheater area. That already looks, looks awesome, you know, so, great job, well done, you know, you've got a lot of people involved.
Guys working.
I I I get it.
In particular, I was actually on vacation, we planted that grass.
Well, but but again, you know, and, uh, I'll go back a few years to the, uh, Grand Street Brick Project, you know.
Forgot about that.
I, well, I've never forgotten about it, because I was amazed, because when you sat in here and told us what you wanted to do. And I'm sitting here thinking to myself, Dale, you're you're thinking big, buddy, you're thinking big, and yet. I never saw a community project that was more, uh, more, uh, well attended or more, had more people engaged in than that one. And we had people out there from age five to age eighty five doing that work, it was amazing.
That one did work.
It did work.
I don't want to do it again, but it did.
I get it, I get it, but, uh, you know, there are just so many good things, and sometimes we don't stop and 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 think about it. But, uh, been a ton of good things, and I know that, seen some of the social media comments on the, on the, uh, crack ceiling and stuff that you've done. And a lot of positive people, positive comments there too, so.
Yeah, well, it's good to be able to do some of that stuff.
It is.
It's probably not on everybody's list here to do, but, you know, um, I mean, it's not something that is glamorous or, uh. Whatever, you know, but it it's important for the streets, so.
Well, I'm also interested, because you brought it up at the beginning of your presentation, I'm also interested to hear your thoughts. And then, and maybe this is more discussion between you and Matt, and come back with, but I'm more interested to hear how your ideas on how we. Can maybe get more people engaged and and have less turnover in the street department, and it may be one of those things that that's just. A department that always is subject to that, you know?
I'd like to know too.
Well, you know, so I'm I'm interested to hear what your thoughts might be, because I'm sure you have some. And, uh, you know, if there's, if there's something that needs to come back before the council, you know, along that line to be. That would help us, you know, slow the, some of that down and and make your workforce a little more stable. I think the council would be very open to hearing it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I'd be willing to to listen, and.
Well.
Say what I have to say, I don't know if it's any, if it's inspiring or not, but.
Well, again, I think that's something that you and Matt can work on, and, you know, if you guys have something that you want to bring back before the council, you know. We want to help as much as we can, I mean, you know, as well as we do, that we don't have an unlimited pocketbook to get everything we need or we want. But, uh, at the same time, you know, we got to have the right people in the right jobs with the right equipment. And that's how we win going forward, so.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah, and and the people we've had, they, you know, there's been some really good ones.
Sure.
They just made decisions and moved on, and that's the way it goes.
Yeah, but we haven't been able to run you off or whatever either.
Right. We don't have an executive session.
Not today.
All right, good.
Not today. Any other questions or comments for Dale?
Yes. Yes, if you could pull up the picture. Uh, today I noticed on the corner of uh Dean Washington that that street sign there is uh looking a little.
Writing it down.
I don't know what happened to that one.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that got winded. We either winded or it got.
Horseplay or wind or.
It's kind of get that way, some of them.
And.
The wind blows and over they go. Yeah, take off a whole line of ridge caps off my roof like it did.
So thank you for listening and feel free to contact me, phone, email, or if you see me on the street, we can talk to you.
Thank you, Dale.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Okay, moving along, we've still got a few business items to take care of. Uh, first item up is consideration of ordinance thirteen eighty-four, amending electric disconnection fee, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a follow-up from last meeting where we talked about dividing the fifty dollar, the current fifty dollar reconnection fee into two pieces. Basically, you'd have a twenty-five dollar fee for the red letter and then uh twenty-five for the reconnection. Um, if you were to approve this or adopt this tonight, uh, it would be effective April one as it's written, so uh, there's still be this month where we would have to do kind of how we're doing it now. We'd use that as an opportunity to warn our folks. Uh, there's several folks who are who are kind of frequent flyers on that list, um, so they'd be made aware that uh this is a change is coming. Um, and so that's, that's what ordinance thirteen eighty-four does for you there.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh adopt ordinance thirteen eighty-four, amending electric disconnection fee. Oh, Mr. Councilman Wilkins, is there a second? Oh, Councilman By. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will poll the council, Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen eighty-four is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Uh, next item up is consideration of amendments to municipal policy ninety-three, Mr. Styles.
So this is second follow-up here. This is amends uh policy ninety-three, which we discussed at the last meeting uh that outlined our process for these uh disconnections and sort of how the timeline goes when we issue those letters. Uh, it's the exact same thing you saw last time. It's just we, now that we've adopted the uh the fee, that makes sense that this this reflects that as well, so. Um, we're just seeking uh approval for municipal policy ninety-three's revisions.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh 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 approve amendment to municipal policy ninety-three. Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now have another amendment to municipal policy number seventy, Mr. Styles.
This is follow-up again from last meeting. Uh, we talked about, this is for the municipal, our, excuse me, the Aquatic Center. Um, so this revised policy shows the fifty percent discount that we wanted to extend to full-time, part-time and volunteer firefighters. Uh, so we we set it similar to how the golf membership goes to where it's for everybody who lives in the house, immediate family who lives in the home. Um, so this allows you, if you have a child or a spouse or somebody who wants to do lap swim or, you know, just a child's ass, you could do that and still apply. Um, we also outlined a little bit more on sort of the how how we do things at the pool, which I think is helpful. Um, we get a lot of questions about how how we shut things down or what the, what the, you know, what the the impetus of doing different things is. And so basically, we just made a statement like the the manager on duty has an obligation to do the most safe thing for the for the employees and for the patrons. And so we we've delegated quite a bit of authority to them. That's just how it operates now. Um, and so we we put out a little bit, a little more information about how they do that. We didn't go into like you know, how we choose when the, you know, when we shut down for weather. We have pretty specific stuff with that, but we didn't go into that here. Uh, we also talked about booking of parties, which is something that comes up quite a bit, was in the old policy. We usually, that can get contentious, especially if we have to turn somebody down, uh, which happens sometimes, especially toward the end of the season when we don't have lifeguards. Um, so we wanted to kind of outline that process and then we also touched on uh our relationship with USD four-ten, which is also in the original policy. Um, it talks about how that works uh with them and gives the manager the opportunity to negotiate that. So how that is working right now is that they do have a pool party typically at the beginning of the year, uh, which they do pay two, two dollars per swimmer and that covers lifeguard costs and everything, operational costs. Uh, but we do not charge them for the PE courses that they do. They come in during the days. Um, how they help us with that is that they actually allow their students, our students who are lifeguards to come out of school that day to lifeguard for us while the PE class is happening. So uh, we just want to kind of outline that. Um, so those are kind of the major changes there. This one was really out of date. Um, as far as financially, what that looks like, we, I'm estimating ten people, uh, it could go up or down. This is just from what we saw last year, so max amount of money is probably about a thousand, eleven hundred dollars, so uh, not a ton of money out the door and it's a nice benefit for people. I think I think it will get used. I think there's people who will be very happy with that, so. Uh, we're recommending adopting uh municipal policy seventy as revised.
Questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the amendments to municipal policy seventy. Councilman By moves or second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is consideration of a sewer line replacement project at a cost of twenty-three thousand dollars, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we have a, well, we have a lot of sewer lines. This is the forced main that goes from our Lutheran lift station, which is by the Lutheran Cemetery, out to the industrial lift station. We make repairs on that thing all the time. It's a stainless steel line. I have no idea why they put a stainless steel line in. Um, so the bottom of the pipe is eroding. Um, sewage is very corrosive and it's a forced main, so there's quite a bit that pushes through there at a given time. Um, and so the sewer department brought it up like, hey, we could, we can replace this line. So they went out and uh they got a couple quotes for that. Ends up being about seventy-five thousand dollars, which is a little too much. Um, so they decided that they could do this in-house, which I think they do have the ability to do this in-house. We uh have low entrenching will be the the kind of the outside contractors that are coming and trench those for us. Uh, and then the uh the other cost to this is just buying the twenty-one hundred feet of pipe, uh, which would be necessary to to make this change. Um, pretty straightforward project at the end of the day. Uh, if you add the two quotes together, the trenching quote and the supply quote, uh, it's twenty thousand, fifty-two dollars. We rounded up for contingency to say twenty-three. Um, there, they can do this in the late spring. Uh, one of the things with doing a forced main is that you have to make sure that the lift station that you're you're coming out of uh, doesn't kick on because it's going to be a very messy deal that happens. So they got to pump that out and they'll have about a day. Usually the Lutheran lift station it activates once a day. Um, it's a high flow day, then we may have to pump it out multiple times. Uh, they'll use the vac truck, pump it down, do the work, and they think they can get it cut, cut over in two days. Uh, one, one day and then maybe two if it bleeds into the second day, so. Uh, real quick project, uh, it's about a fifty thousand dollar savings, fifty-five thousand dollar savings if we do it in-house. Uh, feel pretty comfortable that they can do this and they feel feel like they're ready to do it, so. Uh, we're making a recommendation that uh we we approach this project at a not to exceed cost of twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we do have the money in the, I forgot to mention that, in the budget, we had a pretty significant amount of capital improvements but budgeted for this year because we thought we were going to do lining this year, which we ended up doing last year. Um, so from that perspective, we have budget authority, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then uh actual fund cash on hands is over four hundred. So this is, this fits into the budget perfectly, so.
How long does it take to do a project like this?
This would be two days, hopefully.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just two days. The trenching part, yeah, that again, they're they're kind of working under that that clock with the lift station kicking on, so. Um, they'll get it going and they'll get it done. They'll just dedicate a couple days and blow it out pretty easily. It's in a great location too for that because they don't have to worry about traffic control.
Right.
If we can shut the nature trail down for a day or two, no one's gonna, well, they might have some planes, but that would be pretty easy.
Cool.
Any other questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh authorize the sewer line replacement project at a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand dollars. Councilman McCarty makes that motion for second.
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, project is approved. Uh, last item under our business section is forward invoices totaling four thousand, two hundred, eighty-four dollars, twenty-three cents. Mr. Styles.
I believe this is all fire truck related. They're all, we do regular maintenance on these and this is basically the annual maintenance on all of us, so oil changes, fluid checks, all of the things. Uh, I think there was four incidents on this set, so. Uh, total there was forty-two, eighty-four, twenty-three.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to authorize payment of forward invoices totaling four thousand, two hundred, eighty-four dollars, twenty-three cents. Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And abstain?
Abstain.
Anybody opposed? This motion is carried and and uh those invoices are authorized for payment. Uh, next is our discussion items section and the first part up is a pretty hefty financing analysis for street repairs and fire station.
Yeah, so uh I probably should have to back up and say I didn't put an executive somewhere on this. I probably should have. Uh, I had Greg Barnberg, he's our financial advisor and and does a lot of placement for our bonds, puts this together for us. Greg does a great job with that. Um, so we we wanted to go out and take a look and say, okay, well, what's, what's it look like if we uh, we know we're going to do the Adam Street project, so I had him uh book that out at four, four hundred thousand over a ten-year note just to kind of give us an idea of what that looks like cost-wise. Uh, and then I also had him do uh one point four million, which would be to add the streets, uh, to add Lincoln Street and South Wilson Street to that project list. Uh, which I think would be, it's a good opportunity to kind of group those things together. They're both, he's looking at direct placements on both those, so what that means is that instead of going out to the bond market and marketing and as a full package that we would try to place that with a bank most likely or another financial institution that buys bonds, uh, which saves us money because there's, there's a placement fee, but we don't have to go through ratings that way. And it's, there's a lot more to it if you do an open sale, so. Uh, we put that out there just to give you an idea of what that would cost on a ten-year note. Uh, so you've got that, the first couple pages there are related to that. Uh, the take-home message, I guess, on the, on the one point four million is that it's roughly about two hundred thousand dollars a year uh, on the debt service for a ten-year note. Uh, ten years is, I think, the appropriate timeframe for this type of project. Um, what we would do with that one point four is we would, you know, do the Adam Street project, obviously. Uh, and then we'd flip around and try to do Lincoln and South Wilson. Um, there would be an opportunity there. As as Darren bid that, I took the high number that Darren gave us, which would be a full concrete replacement. Uh, we may be able to do, you know, with the asphalt opportunity this summer, it may be cheaper and better to do that. Uh, those streets, I would always recommend a concrete street because the maintenance is a lot less. Uh, but if it's significant savings on the asphalt, it's something to look at. Um, and the traffic on those streets isn't super high, so it it probably makes sense there. Uh, if you had leftover proceeds, which is a possibility, if you did asphalt, uh, then you could turn around and and uh, with a little bit of work, reallocate that to do some additional street improvements. Uh, we've got other things in the capital improvement program that can benefit from that, so. Um, that was the one point two, uh, and then I also had the four hundred thousand, which I believe is the next one, shows you what that would look like on a debt service schedule and that it's about sixty thousand dollars a year uh for that. Both of those are pretty attainable. Um, the last page is his full analysis of kind of how our, all of our debt looks. Um, one of the things that Greg didn't put in there was we have the money that we use for, we retired the debt for the pool. And so that money comes into into play that you could put toward that, um, put toward debt service, which would be, I I think, a great option for that. Uh, we've talked about how do you use that? That's a non, it doesn't have a sunset on it. It was designed for capital improvements, uh, specifically the pool, but now that's finished. It doesn't have to sunset or go away, so you could reallocate that money and, you know, it makes about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so uh, either one of those would fit pretty nicely into that and you really wouldn't have to mess with the mill levy too much. Uh, we're pretty sensitive about the mill levy. That's kind of the whole point of that analysis, so. Um, that's what that looks like, so. Uh, I, the the kind of the, the take-home message here is that either one of those options would work fine. Uh, we'd be able to afford either the one point four million or just the four, four hundred thousand. Um, so those, those are both acceptable options, uh, and I think that analysis kind of proves that out. Now, of course, this is all just assumptions based on the market when you hold it. Um, it could change, who knows? The market's been fair, fairly favorable. I mean, it's not what it was two years ago when it was basically free money. The interest rates were so low. Uh, these are much higher than that, but if you look historically, they are still fairly low. Uh, we used to issue debt at, well, when I got seven percent in two thousand and eight, I was excited about that. Um, I wouldn't be very excited right now, but this is still pretty good, so. Um, yeah, so that's that. And then I had him, I had him work on the the fire station too, because that's a big project we've kind of got hanging out there that, you know, how are we going to pay for it? Uh, this assumes that we would do a USDA financing for the whole thing. Uh, we just put in the low number on the budget, which is five million, a little over five million. Uh, I don't know that that's, that is not the amount that the current the current design has, uh, but that could be, I think, a fair budget amount. We could probably get to that, but um it might be tough. I don't know. It may need to change. We just, we're gonna start with the five million and just give you an idea of what that looks like. Um, and with that one, so it's USDA financing, which is, you can stretch that out to forty years.
Wow.
Uh, which is a long time. I don't, I don't know that I recommend that. Uh, but what you do with that is if you get into the forty-year deal and the the coupon rates, you know, rates are are pretty comfortable. You can lock that in. You can always advance pay that if you need to. Um, but if 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 situation is that the USDA rate ends up being higher, we could always refinance it later, which is what happens a lot of times with USDA loans, so. Uh, the the extended term is just there so that you can manage the payment, uh, at least in the early years. And so with that, you know, looking at that five million dollars, it's actually ends up being about five points, five point, five and a half almost uh, at the end of the day. Uh, that ends up being over a forty-year period, about two hundred thousand dollars again for debt service, so. You know, if you were going to pay for that with full mill levy, that's pretty significant. Um, but again, you have that, you have the sales tax option too with the existing local option sales tax. You could pick that up. Now, if you're paying for the streets, obviously don't have a full amount to pay for the fire station, so there would be a couple of years there, at least ten, where you're going to have, you're going to have to increase the mill levy to make that happen. Uh, just wanted to give kind of a perspective as to what that looks like. Uh, we're at a point now with the fire station that we need to make some decisions if we're going to get serious about it. Um, because we're going to have to spend some actual money to get the, a full design done and get an idea of what that looks like, so. Um, you know, just say, well, I'm putting it out there for you to know, what I'm really looking for tonight is, you know, what do you want to do with the street projects? Do you want to go with the four hundred or you want to go with the one point four? Um, this is, give us an idea because if we, we're going to have to do a little work to get to that. You're not fully committing to that, but that would be the path you'd want to go down. Uh, and the fire station thing, you know, we're still beating on the bushes, trying to find some alternative funding. Uh, I spoke with Grace Green from Lutner's office the, just a day um, about some potential things, so there may still be funding out there. Uh, I wouldn't set my heart on, we're going to have a magic grant that's going to pay for the full thing, but there may be something that comes in that help offset that cost. Uh, so the five million financing might not be too far off if you consider that we may end up with a portion of that grant or in some other program, so. Uh, don't really need a ton on the fire station other than you just need to know that that's what it would cost to finance it. Uh, and if you want us to keep moving forward with that, then eyes wide open, that's the cost.
On the street thing, I think the one point four honestly is probably the better option, just from a long-term standpoint that helps us out down the road and also on the fire station, I think, because we definitely need to probably keep pushing for it all that.
Fair.
I agree with, you know, fix it now or fix it later.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. It won't be cheaper later, I guarantee.
That's what I say. I agree with Blake on that.
Never going to be cheaper later.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna have to. And uh, restate. Uh, Councilman Blake's. Point honestly.
So what I, what I also would say is if, I, I would recommend that you bring Greg in to kinda go over some of this stuff with you. He's the expert. I am not the expert. I'm just the messenger on this.
Is there a chance we can bring him in at a later meeting?
Absolutely. Yeah, Greg will come in.
So, I don't think that you or Ronald has obviously met Greg or sat through one of his presentations Barney and I have. And uh, you know, I, I tease Matt that there's some non-negotiables when it comes to operating the city and Greg is one of those people, along with JT and Andrew, of course, there, I kinda consider them a package deal.
Yeah, I don't know if you do or not.
A lot of people do.
Yeah.
But uh, but uh, yeah, so I mean, this guy has helped us out a ton. He saved us, I'm gonna say close to two million dollars since I've been mayor with bond refunding that he's brought to the table. And so, I mean, here we're talking about one point four. He saved us more than that in the last uh.
I've worked with Greg my entire career, I think as highly of him as anybody can, so, agreed.
So yeah, so we'll, we'll get him in here and, and, and he'll, he'll, he'll show you, show you why he's uh, why he's the man. Okay.
So just.
So I think we've got some direction here.
We're gonna go with the, look at moving toward the one point four.
Right.
And then keep moving on the fire station.
Keep working on that. Okay. All right, next item up is uh, for discussions, policy forty-nine, purchasing policy, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So again, we're revisiting a lot of these policies just to see, make some corrections, bring some things up to date. Uh, this one came through from Danielle, actually, and, and the finance side about uh, purchasing policy. So uh, we have purchasing policy, which you've, you've got kind of the, the, we've got the red line version there. So what we've proposed to change is in red. Um, first, there's really two changes. The first thing in there is that we propose to give the city administrator more authorization to make purchases up to twenty thousand for very specific things, water and sewer chemicals, things that are, uh, and then electrical transformers and, and kinda electrical capital equipment, materials, uh, conductor switches, poles, that kinda stuff. Um, now the caveat there being, it's gotta be within the improved budget, and then there's a reporting mechanism to come back to that. Uh, the thought process here is that there's a lot of times when we have to make decisions on these fairly quickly, uh, and there's a long lead time on a lot of this stuff. Um, and you know, frankly, we're gonna buy it. We have to have the chemicals for the water department, you know, the sewer department not as much as, as pressing a lot of times, but uh, you know, we gotta have the, the electrical stuff too. Um, so the twenty thousand is more reflection of the times, uh, the amount of money. I mean, you've seen it come through here, how much those things cost. And so um, just giving a little bit more latitude in that, to, to make those very specific purchases and then report back at the first chance. Uh, and the second change there is to increase the threshold on POs. Uh, right now we got two hundred and fifty-dollar level. Uh, and so that generates a ton of POs. Uh, a lot of our purchases end up being, you know, at or around that threshold. Um, so that generates a lot of POs and a lot of tracking. Um, I think the thought with that before was that the department heads didn't really have great information. They never really felt like they had a lot of information. I think we've corrected that. Uh, I think they get it pretty, pretty active idea of how much money they have in the bank. Uh, and you know, we, we trust them internally to make good decisions with that. And then, you know, I don't know that we need to approve every expenditure that's two hundred dollars, so uh, we're talking about moving that to seven hundred, uh, which I think would significantly reduce the number of POs, um, and give some, a little bit of flexibility with that. So uh, those are the two things we're, we're talking about with this. Um, they're still anchored in the budget. They still have council approval elements to them. Um, we're just trying to find some more efficiency with that and hopefully be able to be a little more operationally nimble with some of these things, so. Um, again, we're not asking for a vote, we're just, this is a discussion, so.
Comments?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, limiting the amount of different orders that need to be, you know, kept track of and pumped it up on and just the time to manage them all seems, you know, reasonable, so.
They're all checked anyway, so I think it's a reasonable policy.
So would the council care to have this come up again, or is the council prepared to go ahead and take action this evening? All right. Would somebody then care to make a motion that uh, we approve uh, municipal uh, policy forty-nine for purchasing as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, city administrators report.
Fair enough. Uh, all right, so city administrators reports today, just, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, daycare bids, we had those open on the twenty-ninth. We only had one bidder, uh, and there were some issues with that bid. Uh, specifically that it was, it was, there were some more, it came in more than what we anticipated, and so there's some, we're working through that as a daycare board to kinda figure out what the best game plan is for that. Uh, there's still some outstanding grants that we need to get to come in. Uh, they'll probably make a decision on that. We have to make a decision one way or another in the next thirty days from the twenty-ninth. So uh, that will come to the city council for you, cause technically it's a city project. And so y'all are, are the uh, approving body for that, once it happens, so. Uh, just to let you know, that's been a, an interesting, uh, interesting experience, because it's, I've never been to a bid that quite worked like that, so we'll see how it goes. Uh, planning commission, um, we had five cases at the planning commission last week. Uh, alternative construction, all of them, uh, for container homes. Uh, and so they wanna, the guys who are building the container homes on Third Street wanna build another one, um, single-family home, and then four duplexes. Uh, and so we, they actually invited us over to Lindesburg. They've got a couple that are in progress. Uh, we were, Ben and I both went and take a look at them, kick the tires, see how they were doing. Everything looks pretty good. I felt like they were doing appropriate construction methods. Everything looked like it was appropriate. Uh, we reported that back to the planning commission and they, they kinda talked about it and, and decided that yes, we're gonna, we're gonna go forward with this despite the fact we haven't seen a finished one here yet. Um, and so they're gonna, that's gonna be coming to you guys at the nineteenth uh, for consideration on that. Uh, I've got all the, it's a huge packet of information, but if you wanna look at what the, the planning commission got, that's out on our website, you can kinda download that and take a look at the plans. Yeah, it's on our website, so you can get the plans off that, uh, just to see it ahead of time. But you'll get it too as part of your packet next time. Uh, give me a heads up that our property casualty insurance is up for renewal April one. Uh, I don't have the final numbers from uh, Ag three sixty yet, but there are definitely gonna be some deductible changes. We did get notification from EMC on that. Uh, I don't know that it's gonna be great. I don't think it's gonna be a great renewal. Uh, intra, insurance nationwide has been going up. I, I do not expect it to be positive. Um, we'll see. I don't know what it'll be, but I don't think it's gonna be great. Um, and so, you know, just to throw it out there, it may be next spring when we're looking at this, and we might wanna talk to Midwest Public Risk a little bit more seriously. I think that would be an option. Um, I know we've, we've looked at them two consecutive years and said, ah, maybe not, but it may be something to wanna look at. Uh, I know EMC has actually been dropping some people too. Um, several electric utilities have been dropped because of power plant, they won't insure power plants. They've been dropping power plants, which is odd to me, but um, I don't think we're gonna get dropped, but you know, they've, they've been a little bit more aggressive in cost cutting, so uh, just give you a heads up, that's not gonna be, not gonna be great. Uh, code enforcement change, Doug Dick, his, who's been our code enforcement officer for about a year and a half, I think. Uh, he's decided to bow out of that, and so uh, Ben and, and Jesse have kinda put their heads together and figured out that uh, Dwayne McCarty is gonna pick that up and kinda do some of that work, some of that legwork. Ben's gonna pick up some too, uh, to do some of that uh, code enforcement work. Now, Dwayne did that in Marion. Uh, he would do it on shift. Um, you know, he's kinda on the streets anyway, so he'd be able to pick up some of that stuff and he's really well-versed in it, so I think that will, should be a pretty good, pretty good uh, transition. And I just wanna thank Doug. Uh, that is, it is not a fun job to do code enforcement. Um, he needed a great job. It was very thing, I guess it's two years, it was about two years. Um, this is a thankless job. I wanna publicly acknowledge Doug's uh, service there. He's gonna continue working for us as part-time officer, so he's not going away anytime soon. It's just, that's what's happening with that. Uh, Gorges Dairy, we released space to Gorges Dairy in the old AMPI, the east building there. Uh, they've not really been using it, uh, especially for the purpose that they've leased it for. Uh, and they, appears to be they've subleased or at least are allowing the spa place to store spas in their building, uh, which is explicitly against their lease. Uh, so I talked with uh, Bill Gorges this morning about it, and I think he's still interested in doing uh, a lease, but we're gonna have to work through some of that because he's not supposed to be doing that. Um, so we'll see. Uh, well, the reason why we're bringing this up, we're, we're trying to touch base on all the leases that we have, and there's a few that we know we need to adjust. Uh, that one hasn't changed since two thousand and five, um, so that one's a little out of whack. Uh, and then also we talked about the trash trucks potentially maybe using that space if they were done with it, because we need to, we would like to get them inside if possible, and building a new building is just cost prohibitive right now. So, you know, maybe something that might be an option, so there's more to come with that. We'll, we'll bring that to you when it comes up. Uh, sales tax report, just wanna make sure you have that in front of you. Uh, receipts continue to be pretty, pretty high, uh, historically high. First two months of twenty-three were better than twenty-four, but we really had a strong January last year, so. Um, I think we're on pace to be about where we were last year, so everything's seeming like it's holding pretty well there, and that's, that's a good thing, so. Uh, that's everything I have, sir.
Hey, any questions? All right, hearing none, we will uh, now open it up to our final public comment opportunity. Is there anybody from the public? I don't see anybody online. Jane, any comments?
Oh, I could talk twenty minutes, but I, I'm asleep now.
Okay. Well, we'd give you three. Okay. I'll quit picking on you, sorry. All right, so we will close that public comment and open up council comments, Councilman Wilkins.
Um, just once again, thanking the firefighters, um, for really what they do and being willing to do what they do, especially for the conversation that they're given, uh, I'm willing to go out for training and whatnot, and I think that's fantastic. And like to thank Dale again for, you know, managing our streets and, and I feel like, especially with the street work, it's um, I think not a lot of people understand how important it is and what all goes into keeping functional and running safely. So just wanna give some more praise for what he does.
Anything else?
Oh, no, sorry.
I thought maybe you were deep in thought.
I had a couple of people, older people, they like to use the walking trail. It's just really hard for them to walk. Easily start at the cemetery and.
Yeah.
And walk out to hospital. We could, if they could be, still be a couple of benches they could sit on, going out there. Cause they said they get tired, they'd like to have a chance to rest a little bit, and then they could finish, and then when they come back, they could rest again. And then also, uh, we could get, like some of the dog parks around here have these really nice metal containers you can put dog waste in, and people pick it up, but we could get, the barrels gone that was there. And if we could put uh, one of them up along the trail so people could deposit their waste in there, that would be nice. They used to use the barrel, but it's gone now, so.
Say barrel, are we talking about trash container?
Yeah.
There's trash containers.
So is it missing in action, or did we remove it?
I cannot answer that question. We do have the dog waste things. I know we were working on that last summer to get some more up, and we actually have a plan on the on the trail to add some amenities to it, not just benches, but some other stuff too, so. Working on it.
Councilman by?
Uh, I just wanna wish our lady trojans good luck tomorrow and uh, and state basketball, but uh, other than that, that's all I got.
Hey.
Yeah, Tabor won last night.
Oh, and Tabor too, yeah.
I watched that game, that was pretty good.
All right. Um, I will just uh, just quickly report that uh, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC as part of uh, KPP Energy's board to the American Public Power Association two thousand twenty-four legislative rally. And it was uh, interesting that we had the opportunity to go to all of our legislators' offices. Uh, unfortunately, we were only able to meet with one legislator, and uh, that was Senator Moran and had uh, actually got some nice one-on-one time with him. And uh, of course, he's, he's all in and, and all about all things Hillsborough, so appreciate that. But uh, but yeah, we brought up a lot of the issues that we're dealing with and in terms of the electrical supply chain issues and, and things of that nature with, with them. And, and uh, we did talk about earmarks and, and unfortunately, what, what I learned was that certain earmarks comes out of the uh, KDHE's revolving loan fund. And so whenever they earmark something, it actually just comes off the top of what they give to the state of Kansas. So the KDHE fund has continued to drop because they've been siphoning off earmarks from that fund. So they were all encouraged to find other methods of uh, funding earmarks and to make, to replenish KDHE's revolving loan fund.
Not like social security.
Yeah, pretty much. So that was a good, that is a good trip and then uh, it was education, so I appreciated the opportunity to do that. Um, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thanks for your service this evening.